To order. I have things to say. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV services website and on channel 28. And will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. All right, Deputy Superintendent Hertz, I'm going to turn it over to you to kick us off for this work session.
Well, thank you for part two this evening for the board work session. We are, we met last week and in late in the evening, we proposed the budget. And due to the lateness of our, we wanted to come back and give more, a more substantial time for the board to ask questions, get clarifications and really make sure that we were getting to, after you've had that initial review that you have, you're getting your questions responded to. So with that additional week, you've also had time to review and, and we hope that you're thinking and we want to hear your initial thinking on the budget. And recognizing the investments that we have made in really responding to the pandemic as well as continuing on with our strategic plan and long-term goals. And then we'll want to make sure we get all to your questions. And if we have the information to you, we have a whole group of senior leadership staff members in the green room that are here to respond and go into a little more depth in areas where you would like to learn more. And then if we can't respond to it, we will, we will put it into our written question Q and A and respond to it that way and get it back out to all of you as well as posting it for the community. So this is just a continuation of our original proposal budget meeting and with the board. And we're continuing now with a work session to continue the conversation. So with that, I want to turn it back to Chair Lowry and if, unless there's a question about process.
I think what we're going to do is go through and invite board members to ask their question. Ask, invite you to ask one question if you can keep it to one, we'll go through the whole list to make sure everyone gets a chance to ask their burning question. And then we'll come back to if folks have additional questions and we're going to go ahead and do our the order in the year. So those people with birthdays closer to January get to go first and those people with birthdays closer to December get to go later. So that means Director DePasse is our January baby. And so did you have a question, a burning question about the budget, Michelle?
I don't, but I just texted you that I am going to turn my camera off. I am starting to react from my second shot, so I'm going to lay low tonight.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Chair Lowry, can I ask a clarifying question? So we, we also were asked to submit questions through a budget form, which was, which was great. Are, are those the questions you want us to ask tonight or, or were those sort of additional questions we'll be getting answers back to?
Yeah, the ones, the ones that were submitted in the form will be getting, having staff respond to. We did, we got them, you know, this afternoon and I think we have eight of them now, but we will, Noberto will be putting out the process. So that you can continue to, you know, turn questions in by this day and we'll give you responses by that day. He'll get that out to you with the responses to these initial questions. But so we're, right now we're just kind of, so we're not, if you want to get it out into the community conversation, but, and if we can't answer, we will. But it's not intended to be the eight that you've submitted.
Yeah, so I know like, for example, Director Brim Edwards, I know that you often like to ask questions both in writing and then also in public. So the community can hear the questions you have. So if it's a question like that, please ask it again tonight. If it's a question that you can wait for an answer from staff, then, then please wait. And we wish Director DePasse the best as she recovers from that second dose of the vaccine. I know that it can be a real struggle for some folks. So thanks, Michelle, for hanging in there and listening while we, we do this important work. It's really hard when you don't feel well. Nathaniel, you come next as our February birthday. Do you have a burning question about the budget that you would like to lift up at this time?
Can you come back to me after a couple of members go?
Absolutely. All right, then we turn to Director Scott.
Well, that's surprising, we're already to June.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to note, I think we're scheduled for like five hours of board work on my birthday this year. So I hope someone's bringing donuts or something, virtually, virtual donuts. Yeah, so one, actually one question and involves the testimony we got earlier tonight, I would like to better understand how nutrition services is funded in, in, in the PPS budget. And, and again, I think an explanation, anything we have tonight would be great. Or if there's a place to, to, to point me in our budget document, that would be helpful. My understanding, you know, we see federal funding for this and so it's a separate, separate stream. But I would just love to, to understand a little more of the mechanics behind that and what the limitations are, whether those limitations are federally imposed or, or sort of district policy imposed, that'd be helpful.
And if I could just piggyback on your question, Andrew, that when we get a response to that, what by email, I'm assuming. Also, please just elaborate on what the recent federal decision to provide, you know, full free lunch program, what that means to what our budget otherwise would have anticipated for support there. Cause that's not entirely clear to me.
So I would respond that there are both state and governmental accounting standards board that tell us to not put it into general fund. At the state of Oregon Department of Education, they tell us to use a special revenue fund for nutrition services. And if you go to government finance officers association, they would, many states put it as an enterprise fund. But we follow the state of Oregon program budgeting and accounting manual that states to put it as a special revenue fund. So there is guidelines to us and that we follow in terms of how we categorize it. Now, the difference between a special revenue and enterprise fund, an enterprise fund is meant to be separate by itself. And meant to be where your revenues and expenditures are tracked so that they truly are meant to be used for the full purpose of balancing that fund in that enterprise, if you will. Another kind of fund like that might be where an ESD has a print shop that they create an enterprise fund so that they can bill all their districts for all the printing that they do. That's another example. For, because of the federal funding, it's in the state of Oregon, it's in a because of the federal funding, it's in a special revenue, which doesn't, which lends itself more to taking the self-pay from staff and students when in a normal school year, when we're not in the pandemic. And combining that with federal funds to support the program. Districts, small and large strive for putting the best quality of food on the plates for our students and, and providing the best meals in the service. Some districts end up needing, especially smaller districts will need to transfer from general fund to support a program. Historically in Portland, we have been able to stay within the special revenue fund and not made general fund transfers. So hopefully that's a high level, probably more of an accounting lesson than you wanted in your questions you asked. But that's, there is a reason why it's not in general fund. But it doesn't mean that general fund can't, general fund is allowed to support through a transfer to the special revenue fund.
Thanks. And of course I'm always up for an accounting lesson. So no, that's helpful and that was going to be my follow-up and there's no, there's no restriction on that. But of course there's a trade-off, right? The general fund dollars, you know, are, you know, obviously it's a limited, it's a limited pie. But what I heard you say is we generally haven't, have we supported that in prior years with general fund ever? Is that just, is that kind of a stated policy or an unstated practice, just recognizing the scarcity of our general fund dollars and where they go?
It's, it's not, it's been a practice, I don't know how many years, but certainly in my tenure here and previous to my coming here, it was also, that was the case. But in terms of this year, that is, that would not be the case. Where we have used our fund balance and even with the year-round food at being paid by the federal government because there's so many locations and needs of students across the district. There isn't necessarily as many meals served because of the students aren't all coming to school to get meals and didn't necessarily, you know, many families signed up for delivery, but not all families. So we, overall, we are running at a loss this year. And we anticipate, we've set some ESAR funds aside to support the program as needed.
Thank you.
All right, I get to go next as the July birthday. My question comes from page 66 of volume one, which talks about the additional investments in staffing to assure complete arts discipline pathways. And I know that we've, we expanded those at Jefferson and Roosevelt this past year. And it says, we're going to focus on Franklin, Cleveland and Madison clusters this coming year. And it's kind of a two-part question. One is, if you could share some of the specific things that are happening in those clusters to ensure that. And then the second question is, when are our other high school clusters, what's our plan for those clusters to have that pathway?
Well, I think I'm going to answer your questions in reverse order. I think the plan is to absolutely have a pathway for each of our clusters. That was part of the vision, you know, several years ago in terms of our commitment to expanding a myriad of our arts offerings throughout each of our communities. So we want to continue and, and continue to fulfill on that commitment every year as we continue to expand on that promise. Your first question, I think, was actually asking about the specifics in terms of what it entails. And I know that we have very specific, you know, feeder programs in terms of the course offerings and, and what we're specifically expanding. And I can get you that Chair Lowry in specifics, if you're looking for, you know, what, what does it actually entail in terms of actual expansion of program?
Personally, I just want to celebrate the work we're doing, but also want to, you know, just zoom in a little bit to see how that is playing out. And I know that, you know, we, it's our goal and it would be nice to, you know, think about talking to kids who are going to Benson, that there'll be an arts pathway for them at, at some point, if there is going to be. Because I know Benson, again, with the tech program is a specialized school there.
Absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry Superintendent Guerrero, I was going to introduce Dr. Valentino, who can share a little bit more. But I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Guerrero.
Chair Lowry, I think, well, this is one of those areas we were hoping to do a thorough work session on because there's been incredible work on the master arts education plan. I got a nice preview in the same way that directors have previously seen a universal matrix for all of our CTE programming. And you've noticed year over year, how so many of those cells and those gap areas in certain schools. It's the same thing with the, with the arts pathways. We've seen where those gaps are. We know that they were particularly prevalent in underserved communities. And there's been some wonderful, you know, new programming expansions there. But our CAO, I don't want to steal his thunder.
Well, no, I mean, you, I think, good evening, everyone, Chair Lowry, board member superintendent. So there's not much more than I can add, other than understanding that one of our objectives well, over the past three years has been to set a foundation across all disciplines in the work and the teaching learning practices so that we could build off of that. And so as we build off of that, one of the things that we have to do, as the superintendent indicated, in filling in the gap is to solidify the pathways across all four sectors of the school district to ensure that we have equity in place. Whether it's music, whether it's advanced programming in, in the content areas, whether it's identification of students to make sure that the supports are there. So that's a big effort that we began during the pandemic phase. It's been a little bit more difficult to do clearly, but the, the entire team is now aware that in the instructional side of the house is aware that this is a work now that we're going to have to do is to address equity within the RESJ framework in a way that actually does in concrete ways demonstrate our, our interest in achieving that.
And Chair Lowry and directors, I think we have on the, on an upcoming board discussion and opportunity to hear from Kristen Brason and the growing team there and the exciting work, just as a state of the arts that we like to culminate the school year in. So you can look forward to that too. But you'll definitely hear how there's been additional FPE and programming in a number of our schools that just have had either absent pathways or incomplete pathways. And I think there's been a real attempt to, to fill those in. So stay tuned for that meeting in June.
Thank you. Director Moore, do you have a question you'd like to ask now?
Yes. So I have a question about the state school fund. And I think it appeared in last week's PowerPoint presentation. But my question is, the state school fund is currently proposed to be $9.1 billion for the next biennium. School districts have determined that actual, in order to maintain actual current service levels, the state school fund should be $9.6 billion. The proposals on the table at the legislature are $9.3 billion. And we have budgeted for a $9.3 billion state school fund. Can you talk about what the implications are for PPS and its students? If we don't get additional funding for the state school fund?
Thank you, Dr. Moore, for, for the question. And I think as part of the budgeting process is being able to think about all of our resources were applicable, but at the same time, how do we mitigate disruptions? And so just from a mathematical perspective, when we think about the, what the, the state school fund provides, general rule of thumb is about for every hundred million dollars, that's about, that's an impact of about $3.5 million for Portland Public Schools. So as that, our budget's at 9.3, so 9.1, we could be looking at a difference of about seven to eight million dollars. And so really what we're contemplating is being able to leverage the fund balance to help cover that. And in addition to leveraging some of the federal dollars that we have, although, right? When we think about the, the primary intention of the stimulus dollars, when I say federal dollars, I was referencing the stimulus dollars is to really springboard us and, and push us to tackling the unfinished learning. I was trying to find the right term from our, our summer learning team and, and it's, it's, it's really unfinished learning. And not to plug in holes and, and, and gaps. I mean, it's allowable, but it, like the intention as we pursue that. It's, it's, you know, if it's been due to COVID, there's a reduction. So what, what are the things we're taking into consideration? So really as this budget that we're putting together, we're contemplating a $9.3 billion budget, which would be reliant on leveraging the fund balance by about $16 million. And furthermore proposing about $3 million in reductions on the general operating side of the house. And those reductions are in areas that are primarily non-personnel. It's about, I think I mentioned $3 million and really looking at areas to find additional savings. But I think it's also important as, as we think about whether it's, it's a stable budget, which what we're proposing with a $9.3 billion is stable from the perspective of continuing and mitigating and braiding all of our resources, but also thinking about the, the continuing opportunities to assess how we function. And so as, as we think about what is the summer going to look like? What is then the subsequent investments look like? We're thinking about maintaining stability, but then also starting to think about what the next few years will look like. So I somewhat long-winded answer, Dr. Moore, but I think just from the perspective of being able to put it into perspective besides just a number, just additional context. And I would invite Deputy Superintendent Hertz, if she wants to add any additional detail.
I think you explained it well, thank you.
Okay, well, can I add my commentary since I think you're being very kind and gentle? And I am not. So if I understand correctly, what this means is that at the current proposed funding level, PPS will have a shortfall of essentially $19 million. We're going to make up that difference with $3 million in reductions in service. And you're trying to target it to non-instructional expenditures. And we're going to take $16 million out of our reserves. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at a $19 million shortfall because the legislature and the governor have proposed budgets that don't even maintain current service levels. And it is resulting in school districts all over the states having to come up with budgets that will end up cutting services. Because essentially every school district in the state is experiencing budget shortfalls because of this low state school fund level. Am I wrong?
No, you are not.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that my colleagues and everybody else out there, contact your legislature, legislators who are now having town halls and request that the state school fund have increased funding to at minimum $9.3 billion for the next biennium. Okay, I will descend the soapbox and that's all I had, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I, I would just add that that would be very welcome.
Rita, as always, kudos for consistency.
I am nothing if not consistent.
Yes, and unfortunately, it seems like so are legislators sometimes, that it's a habit in Oregon that when we have additional funding come in, whether it's the state school fund or others, that we then have a shortfall in the state school fund, the Student Success Act. So again, encourage our state to be proactive in, in fully funding our schools.
Can I add two more sentences?
Yeah.
Because I think it's important, I'm not sure that, you know, the folks out there or even some legislators understand the implications of the state school funding level. So I just want to underscore that the common perception out there is that school districts are swimming in cash because it's federal funding. That federal funding is first of all, one-time money. Secondly, it was intended by Congress and, and the Biden administration to supplement existing funding sources at the state level. It was not intended to supplant. So the, the new federal funding is not supposed to be used to backfill shortfalls coming from inadequate funding at the state level. And that's what school districts all over the state are going to have to do if we don't increase the level of the state school fund. And that means that districts are not going to be able to support the kind of additional resources that our students need as we emerge from this pandemic to, to have the experiences they've missed out on for over a year and have the, the kinds of interventions that might be necessary in order to respond to unfinished learning. So, okay, now I really will get off the soapbox, thank you.
I'm going to say that was more than two sentences, but still very important sentences. All right, Director.
I will run on, thank you.
This is why we need you to be in your copy editing mode. Director Scott.
I heard, I just heard, I heard semi-colons throughout, so.
Don't encourage her. All right, Director Brim Edwards, you're next in our birthday lineup. What is your burning question for our folks tonight?
Yeah, well, I'm just, before I go to my burning question, since this is like more than everybody, I guess, I guess it gets more than a burning question. What I would say is just about the last commentary about engaging with the legislature and the federal delegation is I do think people are going to look and see a billion dollar operating budget. And we have an obligation to be able to share how we're spending that. And I, I think we have a ways to go at the beginning. Superintendent Guerrero talked about an elevator speech. I think we need more than that. For example, on the SIA funding, the reference to pages 121 to 123, even with a college degree, as somebody who's looked at budgets, budgets for 20 years, it doesn't tell me exactly what we're, we're doing. It's a number of budgetary line items. So I think we will be really effective in talking to the state, state legislators and our federal delegation if we can translate that into what it means in schools and their districts. Because right now, it's, it's, it's hard to describe how the money that we already have is going to be utilized because it's written in a very dry budget language. But my burning question, speaking of the federal money, is, it's a two-part question. And it relates to this fall and going back to reopening schools. So, and the first part of the question is just a yes or no. Does this proposed budget make the investments and expenditures needed so that all schools can open this fall? So that every student can attend school every day in person for a full instructional day, even if the three-foot social distance requirement is still in place? So that's just a yes or no, and then I have a follow-up.
Yes.
Great, so we don't need more bus drivers? Like this budget will cover everything that we need, even if the three-foot is still in place? Every day, kids can go to school for a full day?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to have to sort of deviate from what you're hearing senior staff say. I'm not sure that's the case. I think this is a proposed budget for plain school, the way we traditionally always have. I think there are very real facility implications, certainly very real staffing implications. You don't have a proposed budget that accounts for those contingencies. And so that really needs some analysis. And we don't know what the guidelines and requirements are going to be or what to plan for accordingly. And so it's all conjecture at this point. And unfortunately, you know, as much as we're pushing back today on our state leadership, including today again, you know, we won't know until midsummer, what's the case? So we know we have to prepare for scenarios that may not come true. But you're right, it's going to require more teachers, more staff, more buses, more facilities.
Just to, since I got two different answers, just to be clear, that this budget, we can't guarantee to parents that even with the three-foot distancing, that they'll, students will have a opportunity to go to school every day for a full day. Cause if, if we, if we can't do that, I think we need to have some sort of side budget conversation about what, what's needed. Because I certainly think that's the expectation of most parents. That, you know, we, we have the funds, we need, we've got whatever six months to prepare for the start of school, that we would utilize that time and the resources we have to make sure that happens since we know that three-foot social distancing requirement is currently in place now. And then my second, so I'm, I'm concerned about that answer, if, if we haven't planned for that. And then my second.
Can we just take a minute there? Cause I feel like the fact that some of our, you know, the staff, some said yes and the superintendent said no. I'd like to just unpack that a little more because I think that is very concerning to lots of folks that are going to hear that soundbite of.
Yeah, can I, can I just add the second one? Cause I think it, they can answer probably both at the same time. It's a, can give a combined answer. Cause the second piece is for those students who, for whatever. Because the second piece is for those students who, for whatever reason, next fall can't return to a school building, does this budget include the expenditures necessary to run a comprehensive distance virtual school at each grade level for those students? Not a hybrid, but a separate.
Right.
Like a virtual scholars thing? So that we can, next fall, move ahead, which is what most people think is going to happen based on statements that have been made to date?
So I think you're right. It's going to be really important to be accurate about the terms or the models or what choices would mean if families elect to engage in them, right? So when we, you know, if there's, if there's an interest and certainly a level of demand or for very legitimate reasons why families would elect or prefer a fully virtual option, it probably wouldn't look like the hybrid CDL model that we look like now. So I'll have Deputy Superintendent Quair talk a little bit about what's being mocked up to sort of think through, well, what does a virtual K-12 school option look like? How do we staff it? How do we teach for it? And how will our families perhaps need to understand that that doesn't necessarily mean you would be participating in your neighborhood school teacher-taught sort of afternoon CDL course? We're talking about something different if we're looking to maximize the instructional day for the students that are choosing to come in in person. So that's just an example of one variable here. But if Deputy Quair, if you could share with directors how staff is starting to sort of really think about, how do we gear up and prepare for and set aside the investments to be able to offer that kind of a choice to our families?
Absolutely. I mean, when we also think about learning acceleration, we're also doing that parallel with how we're thinking through, you know, what does a comprehensive virtual model look like as well? That's going to run tandem, you know, to our actual comprehensive physical spaces. We do have a virtual scholars platform that the superintendent alluded to. That is a phenomenal model that we are absolutely looking at how we can replicate that specifically for a K-8 model that will be, that we could potentially have available for our students who prefer a, who prefer, you know, a virtual learning platform. But like the superintendent alluded to, it would be something that would be, potentially be very separate and be, and be separate in terms of a separate program in a separate school with very specific teachers, not necessarily that it'll be attached to their current program. We do have Chief Academic Officer Dr. Valentino, who is leading that work as we speak. We actually started thinking about a skeletal plan earlier in the fall. But as we started to pivot and thinking about Lippi and then into hybrid, what we did was we ended up, you know, pushing the pause button so we can make sure we were gearing up for a successful spring reopening. But right now, what we've done is we've taken the skeletal plans and we're currently digging in right now. Also, in tandem, as we are planning our virtual model for summer programming. But we have our learning acceleration team as well as our virtual school planning team, led by Chief Valentino and Dana Narenberg and Dr. Hamel, who are planning this work. And we are hoping to give the board, again, more information as we alluded to in our last presentation, that, you know, later into the summertime, you know, we're looking at potentially, you know, then sharing the board with the next step of that work does look like. But I can invite in Dr. Valentino, just who can give us a really quick overview in terms of, you know, what does the planning and the work look like as of right now? And what are some of the things that we're thinking of as we're entering into the summer space?
Yeah, and maybe just to go back to, I appreciate that work's being done on that. I do think the bigger question is going to be for the vast majority of the students who are expecting to go back and their families expecting to go back in the fall full-time. So I guess I would say is I, I all appreciate getting information maybe after the meeting or, you know, additional. But I'd really like to go back to the original question where there was a disagreement between staff about what we'd be able to do. Because I do think that's a pretty central question for next year for our families.
Can I, can I just jump into Director Brim Edwards on this question? Because I think it really is important. But I guess I want to, I want to see if we want to frame it a little bit. There's a, there's a budget question here for sure. But I don't think the budget question is really the main question. It's, it's, it's an operational logistics, you know, planning question that involves state mandates and all kinds of other things. And so I would not have expected the proposed budget to, to plan for, you know, three feet of distance in the fall because we don't yet know whether that's going to be required. And my understanding, and, you know, Director Konstant has been asking this question for months now. You know, what, what would it take, right, at the current requirement? And I believe staff are doing that analysis. Some of our buildings, we would be able to open mostly, you know, get most of our students in there three feet. Some of them we wouldn't. But it would, you know, so again, this, this question, and I don't want to mince words. I am 100% with you that we need to plan for a full reopening, you know, come the fall, no matter what the variables are. But there are some of those variables, I mean, it's easy for me to say that. You know, if we had to rent tens of thousands of square feet and hire hundreds of teachers, there becomes a question of, of can we do that? And so I guess I just want to reframe it. I would not have expected or frankly wanted this budget to include, say, hiring 300 more teachers, right? Because that would have taken money from everywhere else until we have a little bit more clarity. The challenge we're going to be facing as a board and superintendent as, you know, and his staff is, is can we get guidance from the state early enough, right, to plan? If the state is going to lift the three-feet requirement, we need to know that, you know, as soon as we can so that we can plan for a full-time reopening sort of as normal. If the state's going to impose a three-foot requirement or continue it, it's already imposed in the fall, we need to also know that, like, now so that we can be doing exactly what you just said, which is all that contingency planning. And by the way, which I'm fully on board with if we know. The problem is, is we don't know right now, and so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
Director Brim Edwards.
Can I just finish it? Because I, I appreciate, Andrew, you're adding another dimension to my question. I would like to have the question answered, though, on the budget standpoint because there's a statement made that, which I'm supportive of, that we're going to fully reopen in the fall. And I think people will be surprised if in the fall we say we can't do that because we can't hire 300 teachers or whatever. So it would be useful to actually be able to both describe the operational but also the budgetary implications. Because if we all adopt a budget with a, yeah, we think this is going to mean one thing and then it means something very different, and that's not what we've shared with families, I think we're not in a, we're not in a good place with our school community. So I'd like to hear a little bit more of the answer about how the planning and the budget will track that.
Director Brim Edwards, going back to the the yes, no, and the difference in answers there. To Superintendent Guerrero's point, anyways, understanding the budget from the perspective of like standard school and like being back, but not thinking about it from the three-foot rule, lack of space and those additional requirements that would need to be modeled out. And so I think that is that a known factor and to model out what that could look like, inclusive of what would families choose? And there's just variability there to continue with limited in-person or to continue in comprehensive distance learning. There are some of those variables there that I think it would be difficult to model out. But to the original question, I 100% agree with Superintendent Guerrero that like, no, there's just like unknown variability there.
Yeah, well, I think we need to be really clear with our school community because I think they took the statements that have been made over the last several weeks that this fall is going to be a full reopening as a, it will, it will be a reopening. Yes, there may be some modifications because of the, any health and safety requirements, but that students would be going to school every day for a full school day.
All right, I think we're going to move on to Director Konstant because I think this has been asked and answered.
Director Lowry, I think Superintendent had one thing, a response there that would be good to hear.
Well, sure, and I'll try to be brief. And, you know, stand by the statements we fully expect to be open. But I gave the caveat when I made that statement, right? Assuming the requirements permit us to, and we don't make those up. So the community might be disappointed, so would we. And so it partly depends. Are we talking about making sure our families have a choice in a virtual option or continuing a hybrid model? Because if it's a hybrid model, then you see some of what you're getting now as sort of the school model. If that, if that restriction is lifted or is a different kind of requirement, then we are able to more fully open and maybe plan some contingencies around the edges where we might need some more staffing. And so it's these kinds of variables and the lateness of the continuing to change dynamics and, and variables and guidance that makes it very difficult to plan. This is not a PPS unique situation. I just spent two hours this afternoon hearing from all the superintendents across the state who are wrestling with this exact same question. So, you know, we're going to continue to sort of try to get some, some exact requirements here. And, and I'm not faulting our state leaders because they don't have a crystal ball and they're seeing what's happening with the health metrics right now as well. And so I think everybody, including me, is trying to be conservative and thinking about the health and safety of our community, our students and our employees.
Well, I think a perfect example of that is what's happening right now with the high-risk categories that, you know, indoor dining closed last Friday in several of our counties. Now it has reopened again. So that thing, the hospitalizations didn't hit that 15 number benchmark. And so, you know, it's a moving target. Director Konstant, would you like to ask your question now?
Thank you very much. So first I have kind of a comment. And I've, I've said this before and had a bit of ongoing discussion with staff around this. But on a structural note regarding how the budget proposal reads, I feel like it's really important for us to break down our special revenue fund and particularly our federal funds. This is considered a national best practice. I think it would be easy for us to do. I think one question that I have that's a subset of this opinion is that I believe that our priorities for our ESER funds are the same as our priorities for our SIA funds. Superintendent, would you say that's generally the case?
The intended purposes for each of these state and federal funds? I mean, they have restrictions. They're not, you know, a free check, you know, or a blank check for, for school districts. They have intended purposes in most cases.
They do, but my question is, the framework that we're using, the budget proposal doesn't have much specific information about the framework for prioritization for our special revenue funds, both the student investment account and the Measure 98 funds and the ESER funds. And so I guess maybe we don't need to answer this now. But one thing I would like to get really clear on is whether or not our framework for prioritization is the same for our ESER funds as for our SIA funds. We'll set Measure 98 aside because those are much more specific and they're basically just a carryover from the priorities that we've had there in past years that have been well articulated.
Right.
So I would like an answer to that question, but it doesn't have to be right now. But my other really more important point is that I think that as a matter of transparency and communicating with our community, it's really important for us to break down that special, special revenue fund. I mean, $236 million, I think, with those aggregated funds. I think it's really important to pull out those ESER funds and to show the public what our priorities are and to also show the public how they specifically fit in and track with the federal, federal guidelines around how those should be spent. And then over time, we should be able to show our families, this is how this showed up in a given school community. This is how, how we've appropriated this. I don't think this is a lot more work in terms of a different kind of presentation for the budget proposal. But I feel strongly that, that creating a narrative that expresses that clearly is, is something that's really missing from this budget proposal. So that's something that I would like to see just from a, from a structural perspective and from a communications perspective. So I'm going to keep, I'm probably going to lay down die over that. I'll just tell you that right now. And also, just to be clear, it's, that's considered a best practice for all of our districts around the country. And I served on the National Panel of Board Members specifically about these ESER funds. So I'd like to see that and be able to talk to our community really clearly about that. My, my question.
With you, Director Konstant.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said I'm in complete agreement with you.
Okay.
I think we all agree that 500 pages of a two-volume budget book or a 35-page executive summary still isn't digestible or palatable to the broader community. We need to be able to give sort of that, that high level sort of, these are the important ways that we're investing each of these funds. I appreciate the feedback. The reason we should have included the former SIA narrative because that's what we worked on. We have it. We could have inserted it in the budget book. Our list didn't change. We're just now have the full SIA fund to support those things. We already spent six months going through the prioritization exercise for that we spent many a long night with the board discussing. So, you know, it's just reminding people sort of that, you know, we've had many of these conversations. So we're filling in the blanks with, with some of these new funds.
I do, I think we need to pop that in and also Measure 98 and also any explanation of how our strategies have deviated. And also some narrative around evidence that our strategies have been working. Because we do have some hard data on, on some of that, which is always good to put in a budget proposal. And then my last thread, as far as other questions, I've submitted some already. I'm happy to have just those conversations by email. But my other thread, which is a little messier that I want to raise here, has to do with a conversation we've been having with our community-based alternative schools. So, so right now, in terms of the way they're funded, and I'm happy for anyone to correct me if they think I'm mischaracterizing this. But the way I see it is the way that they're funded is really from a system perspective, from a system lens in terms of the, the mechanism through which these students are served. We make decisions about how we're going to fund via that particular channel. And I would like to change that whole lens. And I think it makes a lot more sense to really look at the students that are being served and what do they need? And how are we resourcing them relative to students being served in different channels, in different ways, through different mechanisms? And then have a conversation about, is our status quo equitable? Because I think we've received a lot of really good information from our community-based alternative schools, our partners, about, you know, what, what they do, how they're resourced relative to our comprehensive high schools, for example, relative to Alliance High School, for example. And one thing, you know, I love my, I love me my volume two, man. I love those school profiles. And there's just so much information in there. And it's just really, also, I'm so proud of it because it is an artifact that really shows how this district has, has flipped our school resourcing from an enrollment-based strategy to a student-centered, need-based strategy. And, and we see it loud and clear that our highest need schools really do receive considerably more resources. But our community-based alternative schools aren't included in our school profiles. So I would like to see, I think I've already made a request for this, but some more demographic information about the students that these schools are serving. Because we know that there's a high proportion of special education students. We know that there's a high proportion of students in color. We know there's a high proportion of homeless students and foster students, foster care students. So I'd like to see that. And then just advance this conversation about are we or are we not equitably resourcing those programs based on the students they're serving? And so if anybody, I can re-articulate some of this in writing. But also, Alberto, I'm happy to have a conversation, follow-up after this. And Karina Wolf has been in some deep conversation with our, our community-based alternative partners. So this is, this is a request that I, that I intend to carry forward in this budget process, specifically looking to increase their pass-through rate by at least 10%, at least from 80 to 90%, if not 100%. And then also talk about, are they getting equitable school-wide supports? Like counselors and, you know, athletic directors and all those, you know, let's look at it from a kid's, kid's eye view. uh as opposed to a system eye view.
Well, appreciate the observation, Director Constan, that we have continued to move towards differentiating our resources more equitably to a greater degree for our more underserved schools uh who need those additional conditions and supports. But your point is well taken. We know who the alternative schools are serving. And 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 they need those similar types of uh supports as well. So I know staff is engaged in doing an analysis right now for for our CBO-run alternative schools. And I believe there's also an upcoming meeting uh happening with with the school leadership and administrators there. So I I would say stay tuned because because we are taking a a deeper look at it in the same way that, you know, the reason you're seeing a a little bit of, and maybe I'm just not up to speed here, but the requests for for staff to sort of sort of lay out clearly sort of the analysis around some of these contingencies on full reopening. So, you know, all we're we're operating in real time here, so uh but but the questions and the themes are what we are looking to draw out from directors tonight, and that's exactly what you're doing because it it tells us, you know, uh there's there's this additional work in context that we want to make sure is is clear to the community and to directors between now and adoption.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
All right, I inadvertently skipped Director Bailey, so I guess we're moving his birthday to December. So Director Bailey, did you have a question?
I'm gonna take both this year then. Yeah, um, so I want to first start off with sort of a meta view of this book as a a communication. And I think it's gotten a lot better as we have gotten much more systematic about, we have a vision and now it's flowing down into a strategic plan that's really well articulated here. And the next step is to really make concrete those pieces of the strategic plan with line items. Because the line items uh has been said before, sometimes jump out. So if you do look at page one, ten and one eleven, which is the grants fund detail, and that's where uh the federal money is coming down. And I understand that the book doesn't uh reflect the latest thinking on where that is, that um because of timing, there were essentially some placeholders thrown in there. But you you can look there and see the big jump in nutrition services because we'll be feeding kids all year. That's a big deal. It's uh, you know, to ten or twelve million dollars, something like that. That's a big deal and it would be nice to call attention to that in the narrative and make that connection. You can see in the Student Investment Act, uh the big jump in both uh regular staffing for uh especially elementary and middle as well as instructional specialists. So you you see what we didn't get last year or this this year because of of the low revenue that came in. But hopefully we'll come back next year to fund. And that's a a big piece of the story that we've been saying is that we are pushing instructional specialists into our uh media schools or CSI and TSI schools. That's key to our strategic plan, to our vision, so uh our and our commitment to racial equity. So there are pieces there that I think we could do, just take that one more step to call out um connecting the plan. Uh, it's connecting the narrative with the actual line items. And I think that's that's where uh again, ta- taking this and taking it one step further is when we call out uh like the very first objective in the strategic plan was to improve at at the school level that uh collaboration and innovation uh really changing the the culture and the structure. What isn't clear is what in the budget is supporting that? Not to mention, what does that look like on the grand level? If if I'm working at a school and I read that and go, okay, what's, how's that going to be different from for me? But in particular, for a budget document, where does that show up? And then in the second uh strategic plan objective, where does that show up in the budget? With some specific numbers would uh really um as uh a member of the public to go through and say, wow, okay, they are putting their money. We are putting our money where our mouth is and and living up to our values. So that's that's my kind of overall commentary. I want to agree with Director Moore about um and we saw on a slide earlier, money coming in from the state uh school fund dropping a- as a piece of what's going on uh with state funding. Uh, and I'll be going to one of those legislative uh town halls tomorrow night to make that point. That's something really important because it, again, if there's a deficit there, it forces us to backfill with dollars that we need to dig our kids out of the hole that they're in right now because of the pandemic. Forces us to lessen that effort to do basic operations. I'm 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 gonna stop there uh and say, you know, it's it's almost all there. And with a li- a little more infill of some attaching some specific dollars. Uh, again, I'm really happy with the direction that we've gone in to make that that connection. Oh, okay, there is uh one thing that came up. We've talked previously about a uh return on investment achievement. And it's been mentioned for a couple of years, how close are we to actually implementing something like that? And how uh how does how does that show up budget-wise?
So as we roll out the strategic plan in June, in the middle of June, that will include metrics and um that also with the um the next step that you're just discussing about getting to where we're monetizing the strategies um and putting a dollar per student cost on implementing the strategies and then also looking at comparing the dollar per student costs as well as the um increase in um meeting the metrics. That's the what's needed to be have in place and are able in order to do the academic return on investment work. So we're get we're getting closer and I know that our CFO, Delgado, is planning on um bringing some of that expertise that he has in this arena and will be helping guide us through that as we uh move forward. And especially the next fall, we'll be um doing some community outreach based on the strategic plan. So in in preparation for the following year's budget.
And I should have prefaced my question by saying return on investment for achievement is a measure of how a specific intervention to help students, how effective it it is per dollar. And if we can assess that out, then we know where to put our dollars to be more effective compared to some other programs that might have some impact but are either incredibly expensive or just not as effective in terms of dollars spent.
You're you're singing our song, Director Bailey, and I don't want to be a ball hog because I know Dr. Brown and I have the same dream to tie performance management with investments. So I'll let him just give you a teaser.
I saw Russ pop up there. Are we going to hear from Russ now? Is that the?
Yes, microphone, Russ.
There's an old documentary of Los Angeles punk bands called The Decline of Western Civilization. And one of the lines is the members of the band reminding the lead singer to sing into the microphone as because he's kind of wandering all over the band. Into the mic, Russ. Well, maybe we can come back to him.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Uh, you know, we we go between different environments and Zoom, for whatever reason, has way more options for microphones. Because I tried every button, but what I what I was leading with uh was I'm thrilled to have Chief Delgado here with me because we we've started to have these conversations, the conversations that uh the superintendent I've had along the way around being able to really not only look at um academic outcomes, climate outcomes for our students as articulated in the strategic plan, but also the alignment of dollars to them and to to look at those uh return on investment uh pieces for it. It's work that I had done uh previously, uh and I think uh Director Bailey, you you articulated it well. It's this idea that, you know, if you have two things that are both producing academic outcomes, but one is much more expensive than the other and the outcomes are very comparable, why on earth wouldn't you expand uh, you know, the use of the the less expensive of the two? It's, you know, it's a basic sort of budgeting sort of process and stewardship of resources as we move forward. And so, yeah, really looking forward to um the release of the strategic plan with those those um metrics associated with it so that we can begin to to do that work moving forward. Of course, it uh it will be greatly facilitated by being back in person and in actually being able to do measures in the more traditional, pardon me, traditional sense as we move forward. And now I'm intentionally turning off my mic.
One more piece um that I think uh I was really happy to see. And that's the discussion of special education and intersectionality between um students receiving special education and and race. We we've talked about that before and it's, it seemed like they were compartmentalized before. And I'm very happy to see that recognized, that intersectionality recognized and called out. Yeah, I'm can't quite, it's on like page eight or page nine. It was like, yes. Oh, it was the mindfulness inclusive on on page nine.
And when it's talking about the next uh level of the strategic plan, the next tier of priorities.
So uh I think that is a big step forward for us. And when it comes to the budget, it's notoriously difficult to track what's going on with special education in part because special education funds sometimes are mixed in with other funds and not not separated out. So to the extent that we can get that, get something pulled out sooner rather than later and have those expenditures related to or the strategic plan would be great. And in particular, uh last year, uh and this is relatively small in terms of the billion-dollar budget. But speech pathologists in CSI, TSI Title I schools previously had had a uh a lower caseload or more staffing per student in recognition that uh the students they were seeing often showed up with a whole array of issues compared to students with a speech issue um at a wealthier school. And that was done away with last year, which basically increased the workload of folks really in the trenches in those schools. And I would like to see that something like that returned into the budget. I don't know where, you know, I don't know where to find it in here. But I'd like to see that addressed uh for this coming year. And something like that uh pulled it back into the budget.
Director Bailey, I I just want to thank you for, you know, um, you're exactly right. Special ed is absolutely a priority. I mean, when we think about you know, uh all the students that we serve, I mean, fifteen percent of our of our population in PPS are special need students. We service close to about six thousand plus students um um who are identified as um special education. So we are really excited to have that as a priority that will be um very, very visible to the community in terms of how, you know, we are um um developing strategies around ensuring that we are providing all of our special ed students, you know, access and opportunity and all the supports that they need. Specific to your question around the CSI supports with speech pathologists, um, I do want to invite Brenda Martinek into the conversation so she can just talk just really quick just about um, you know, some of the supports that we still have in place to how we are still pushing in to make up some of the areas um that you were mentioning. So if I can go ahead and call Chief Martinek into the conversation. Hello, Brenda.
Good evening. Thank you, Craig. Uh, good evening, uh, directors. And um Director Bailey, thank you for asking the question about uh special education. Last year, we did um have a few reductions um that we needed to do in regards to our speech path uh supports so that we could actually um put more students uh into more speech paths into service. And we're still looking to see how many of our students are going to continue in a virtual environment for next year and how many of our students are going to come back in person. Currently, for special ed, uh, we're seeing about fifty percent of our students that are uh coming back into person and about fifty percent of our students in CDL. So as we continue to look at that, we will um look at the budget and what the needs are uh to support our students with special needs.
And again, if we're planning on everybody back, which is what this 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 budget is in, everybody back, then my question still stands about um the the caseload issues with speech paths in uh CSI, TSI Title I.
Yeah, that that's why we actually uh reduced um our SLP like a, it it was like a TOSA position. Uh, we took away that position so that they could actually serve students in order to decrease those caseloads for our SLPs. What we still continue to do is uh sometimes have issues hiring for those specific positions, OTs, PTs, speech paths. They're always um positions that are hard to fill positions. So we will continue to uh to look at those positions that need to be hired. In addition to our CSI schools for speech paths, what we have done with the SIA dollars is we increased our school psych FTE. And we're um, we're looking at more of a comprehensive school psych FTE in order to um make sure that uh our students are served in a holistic fashion. And so some of that will help uh with some of the uh speech pathology, especially in regards to the tiered supports or interventions. And um additionally, uh in regards to that, uh, the speech paths for our CSI and TSI schools, we look to provide additional um supports and services uh in other areas as well. But we do uh follow the contract, the PAT contract for speech paths. So whenever they're over a contract, we do um compensate them.
Well, I'd be interested in getting more information uh as this is assessed out in the budget. And again, keeping keeping a flag there. And again, keeping, keeping a flag there um, on that caseload issue.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Thanks.
All right, Nathaniel, are you uh, ready with a question at this time? And I, um, what we're gonna do is we'll come back around. I know some people, I asked folks to ask one question. Some folks were able to do that. Other folks kind of got caught up in the moment. So we'll go back through the list because I know, for example, Andrew has a couple of additional questions and some other folks that might have more as well. So everyone will get a chance to ask more questions. Don't worry about that. But Nathaniel, first to you.
Uh, yes, I have got one ready. Um, and it is pretty specific and I imagine there is a reason for um, what I'm looking at, but I just, I'd like to hear the rationale. Um, so I, I'm glad that the majority of our schools would experience an overall increase in the post, in post student funding and that at least for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year, the um, sorry, for at least the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Uh, however, I'm interested in hearing about the post student funding levels at Wrigler. Uh, why would a school with 85%, with an 85% underserved population, 8% math proficiency and 18% ELA proficiency as them, as measured by the 2018 and 2019 score to balance testing, see its funding decreased by approximately 12% on a post student basis compared to this fiscal year? When it appears that many comparable schools with a similar le- level of post student funding, um, both now and in the past, um, would not.
I don't believe we have that information right here in that detailed level um, for this meeting, but we've taken down your question. Nathaniel will be happy to um, respond to it once we've had a time to research it.
All right, thank you.
All right, Director Scott.
Thank you. Um, all this, uh, these are, these are all pretty quick. And, and may not require, don't require an answer tonight. Um, one question I have is if, it'd be interesting for me to know. I believe minimum wage in Oregon's going up to $15 an hour in 2023. I may be wrong about that, but I think it's 2023. I'd be interested to know um, how many positions we have in the school district that uh, entry level is currently under $15 an hour and what it would take to increase that to $15 an hour as part of the 21, 22 um, budget. And I understand it's not just a matter of increasing those folks. There will also be compression issues potentially. So, so it may be a more complicated analysis, but I would be just interested in knowing what that, what that, what that delta would be. Um. And then uh, this question is not super well formulated, but um, so it's maybe more of a statement than a question. I've heard you talk a lot and, and, and in a, in a really good way about the one-time federal resources that are coming our way and, and ongoing resources that we can count on. And I just, I want to just reiterate the importance of that approach. And again, it comes through in your budget documents. So I know it's something that Superintendent, you and your staff are focused on, but you know, how we, how we look at those federal dollars and, and when I say one time, maybe we do stretch it out over, over a couple of years, but just recognizing those dollars will go away. Um, and then what that, what that ongoing funding level is, and I, I do share um, Director Moore's, you know, concern that if, if that ongoing funding is decreased and even if we can backfill for a couple of years, that, that leaves an even larger, you know, cliff um, a couple of years from now. But just making sure as we are budgeting that we're being very clear about the fact that um, those one-time dollars are being used for one-time expenses, or if they are being used for staff, that we're very clear that they're limited term staff, that we have a plan for ramping down, that the staff are only going to be there. So again, I, I think that's already happening in this budget, but I'd like to just make sure we keep talking about it as we go through and not just so that we understand it as a board, but actually the community understands it as well. Um, that, you know, the federal resources are going to be extremely helpful and they're time limited. And I don't think we can count on another um, funding later. Um, so those are just um, two questions. And then just so the board knows and, and just to put it out there publicly, the questions I did ask, which I'm happy to get answers whenever they're ready. Um, one was about um, custodial staff and just understanding what, I know there is an increase for custodial staff. So how many is that? What does that get us to? And then can we put that in historical context? Um, someone told me that as of the early 2000s, we had, I think, 445 custodians. Uh, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I'd be curious if, if our, looking back at those records, um, you know, what, what, what was our custodial staff? What is it today? And then is there a metric, a, a standard industry-wide metric, you know, square footage, you know, per custodian or, or something along those lines that we can sort of gauge um, the appropriate, or I don't want to say appropriate, where we are in terms of overall funding, um, and whether we want to sort of think about a long-term plan, you know, to increase that again. And then relatedly, uh, my second question, but it's, it's just really a, a larger picture of that first one is um, operations and maintenance funding and I, is there a way to estimate the O and M funding that the district is currently spending? And again, can we put that in context of, of, you know, industry-wide standards? I know that one's going to be harder than the custodial staff because how you define O and M is very challenging. Um, so we may not be able to get, I don't want to pretend there's a level of precision there. Um, but sort of what I'm really trying to get at is as we're investing billions of dollars in new facilities, um, have we absolutely positively dedicated the O and M to maintain those assets? Um, and I'd like to make sure we're maintaining all of our assets so that at least they're not continuing to decline. But definitely in terms of those new assets, because there, nothing will destroy that public trust more than if one of our new high schools 10 years from now feels rundown um, and in need, and a need of repair. So again, that may be a long-term question about where is our own of now and, and where can we build it up to over time? Because again, it's, as with all budget, I, I, you know, people hate to hear it, but it is a zero-sum game. Um, but figuring out what that, um, where we are and, and what that would look like would be really helpful. So, thanks.
Great. Go ahead, Superintendent.
I was just gonna say all, all great topic areas and we'll make sure to sort of elaborate responses to, to each of these areas, which I know have come up uh, previously. And then I just want to thank you for bringing up once again, uh, these recovery or relief dollars, their one-time assistance dollars. And so I think we tried to be really careful in sort of how we created our visual matrix of all of our revenue streams along the top and all of our priorities along the left. And we're very judicious about what level of funding was coming from what column because we don't want to find ourselves in a pickle where we've made investments in non-sustainable areas. And look, some districts will need to fill their budget gap, you know, with an inadequate current service level uh, with those monies, which is too bad because it's really intended to support students, you know, getting supported and getting caught up. And I think some of our legislators, you know, it's become clear, don't understand that uh, and might see that as politically expedient, but this is, this is a real issue. I think everybody needs to understand.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, my question is more on sort of the operational sides and Superintendent, it's a conversation you and I have already had, but I thought it would be good just for, for public to, um, as we talk about the, the budget and the strategies that you've chosen to get us towards our strategic plan and those board goals. Um, some folks have asked about why not um, extend the calendar? And I know that your strategy has been instead to invest in supports, additional staffing. Um, and I just wanted to ask you to, to just in kind of broad strokes, um, speak to that a little bit about that, um, that choice of the best way to use those budget dollars to really serve, especially our historically underserved students.
Sure. Well, speaking of the current service level, if that was increased to a consistent, sustainable level, we'd be talking about, you know, what level of additional school days is a time to, to add back. But when you have, um, when you have to be more targeted, you know, with, with additional new resources around where you need to apply those uh, more equitably, you want to be targeted. You know, we're just having the conversation around impact uh, and where we need to see that and where we need to apply those, those dollars and interventions is, is why you see sort of the myriad of strategies described uh, to you in this way. Um, and at some point you want to come back to turning the dial up for everybody uh, in their experience and quality of educational program. But we're, we're still in this, we're building capacity, we're being targeted, we have some schools that are sort of not, not in the same sort of uh, a realm of, of, of condition. Uh, and so, you know, we're being a bit more deliberate and, and judicious at this point.
Thank you. Cause that's, that's probably the number one budget question I get. It's class sizes and um, school days. And I really appreciate again, this very clear priority of PPS to be targeted, to be strategic. And that adding days or times of school year benefits every student, which is great, but right now we're really trying to build that capacity, um, really target those students that are, uh, need the most supports. Um, and so to use those funds to, to create those extra positions, those extra supports is, is the strategy at that moment so we can meet our board goals. Um. Thank you for articulating that. Just so we get it out there again and again about um, this, I think, I think it's remarkable how PPS has had such a clear vision. And I think Director Constan, you raised this about the staffing not being focused just on numbers, but on need as well, um, which is really important.
That, there's another phrase that my colleagues around the country sometimes use, like, let's work at a better day before a longer year. And so we still have a little bit of work to do there, which as you've heard, some of it's focused on core curriculum. Some of it's focused on professional learning and instructional coaching. Some of it's focused on giving our school leaders sort of the flexibility to adapt for their community's context and the gap areas that they have with the specific students that they serve. You just heard about sped 15%. That's a big number of our population. That's a general education issue, frankly. And so how do, how do we all work at being able to differentiate for the diverse learners that we serve?
I love that catchphrase, a better day before a longer year. Um, and I think about just how um, you know, trying to improve days, especially for our students who struggle the most. So thank you. Uh, Director Moore, do you have any further questions? Rita, you're muted. I think you have to unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, I have submitted a few questions, um, so I won't, I won't bother to talk about those tonight. Um, I guess I just want to uh, say a couple of things, uh, which will more likely be comments in, in the form of comments rather than questions. Um, I, I echo um, comments from my colleagues about um, uh, sort of crafting a message around the budget that is more um, really more accessible to the general public in, in um, understanding how we are using scarce resources to advance the strategies that um, you have identified as, as being the most powerful to address the inequities. Um, and I, I mean, I think it's worth thinking about the budget as a um, like a communication document. Um, and as it stands, it's um, it's, it's very hard to get through. So if, if we can come up with some um, smaller documents that, that really spell out the, the essential message, um, I think that would be really helpful. Um. Um, I agree that we need to be more explicit about how we are using um, the federal funding. I think it's doable and I, and I also agree that we need to be more explicit, um, probably much more explicit about um, the implications for PPS. Uh, I'm going to be a little monomaniacal tonight. The implications for PPS of the um, of the shortfall in state funding. Um, I think it would be very interesting to get a document that spells out in, in fair detail um, what you would do with the money if we actually did receive current service levels. Like where would you put that money that we ought to be getting if the state were adequately, I'm not even going to say fully, adequately funding public education in Oregon. And um, I also want to underscore that a lot of the earlier discussion about the um, is this budget going to cover, you know, all of the costs that might be associated with next year if we include, you know, some some proportion of students m- might end up opting for distance learning. So is this going to cover it then? And the answer was, w- w- we actually can't predict with great precision w- what the conditions are going to be next year. Um, which is not a satisfying answer for anybody, but I think it's accurate. And it underscores the need to preserve the additional COVID-related federal funding so that we have the funds to respond to the conditions that exist come September. And if we end up having to use them to backfill inadequate state funding, it defeats the purpose of those monies. And it's going to harm our students. It's going to make it much, much more difficult for the district to be nimble and responsive to ever-evolving conditions on the ground. Um, so for all, you know, for the hundreds of people who are watching this on YouTube, um, I, I'm, I'm going to reiterate my request that you get in touch with your state legislators and emphasize the fact that it is their duty to adequately fund the state school funds in order to allow public schools to serve our students as they come out of this pandemic, the way they need to be served. Okay. I'll stop there. Thank you.
We, we, we could, as, as you know, Dr. Moore, I welcome our long discussions on topics like these, but when you ask, uh, I'll try to distill it, uh, what would we do with additional resources? Well, the things we would always want to invest in are the things that increase school community's capacity to create conditions to accelerate student learning outcomes, right? I'm going to invite our regional soup, Dr. Keely Simpson here because as the supervisor of our CSI schools, I think you always learn from the schools that are improving. And the things that we're trying to do there that are high leverage strategies are the things that we always hope to take to scale. As someone who used to be in Keely's position supervising turnaround schools, so could you just give our directors a, a little sample list of the kinds of things that you've worked closely with area senior directors and your school leaders around, you know, where they believe they can, you know, really leverage investments to whatever degree we make available to them?
Sure. Good evening, uh, directors. So a lot of what we spend our time with in CSI schools is around instructional improvement and what's happening in the classrooms. And so uh, we work the principals a lot around what's happening in our PLCs, intentional planning, alignment across all of our classrooms, standards-based instruction. And so those are the things that we spend the most of our time on. Um, as you know, our CSI schools also partner with UVA. And so we're working on 90-day cycles of improvement and working on trying very specific things and then measuring that to see if we're getting the impact um, that we are really focusing on, which is student mastery of standards. So um, just really focusing on professional development, professional learning, but very targeted and intentional um, around standards-based instruction, which again starts in our PLCs. Um, our principals spend a lot of time in the classrooms, coaching our teachers, working with our teachers. You see the increased supports with our instructional specialists. And that's what they're working on as well. Um, it's just alignment um, in our standards-based instruction and our uh, strategies that we're using.
Hey.
I want to thank those directors who, who have um, found opportunities to visit our schools accompanied by our principal supervisors and our regional soups, because hopefully uh, you're, you're, you're gleaning, uh, it can be instructive uh, to, to sort of see how on the ground we, we are trying to uh, improve uh, student outcomes for, for our, uh, for our stu- for our students. Um, so just a little sample set there around, to, to try to answer the question here around, well, what would you do with more dollars? We would do more of that, more professional learning time, talking about the problems of practice and what to do about them.
All right, Director Brett Edwards, did you have any further questions you wanted to ask tonight? I know you've already sent some in via email.
I do. I will actually a lot. Um, but I'll ask one that I'm often asked about these days um, by parents who are concerned about um, just what happened over the last year and a, and a half and sort of the, the either curriculum or subjects that students didn't get to um, just because of the, you know, change in curriculum or change in schedule, um, you know. So, and that they're not going to be ready for um, well, or the negative impact it has on the readiness for them to be ready for the next grade. So if they're in third grade, they didn't get some, something that is sort of a foundation for fourth grade and then they're behind or that is, they're not going to be prepared for their uh, post PPS plans. And I guess I use math as an example. So we know last from the met, the maps testing data that showed that students didn't make the progress as expected in, in math. Um, so good news uh, more so on reading, but not so in math. And that we also know from, based on that data that um, large gaps. large gaps in achievement still exist between our Black Indigenous and students of colors and and between white students. So I'm interested in, it seems sort of sort of sprinkled throughout that we're going to have these investments in either our CSI and our TSI schools or in specific classrooms. But I guess I want to click up for a moment because we have Black Indigenous and Students of Colors in all in all of our schools, so not just our TSI and CSI schools. And we have students who, all students who, for whatever reason, didn't have unfinished learning or or gaps or or losses. And so what are we what are we doing at a a macro level in every school and every classroom to address what maybe students missed? Or is it going to be like that's that happened to everybody in PPS and we're just going to move on? But I I'm at a loss looking at the through the budget document to be able to answer that question for for parents who are concerned about their students readiness for the next grade or that they're going to be that they're progressing in their growth.
Thank you, Dr. Director Brent Edwards. I mean, that is a very, very important question. And those are questions that I'm also hearing as well from community and families that are concerned, you know, with students that have that have not gotten the full experience of what in class schooling looks like. And so so that 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 your your question is in multiple layers. We could talk about investment specifically. One thing that really comes to mind is the critical investments around professional development and the professional learning series. Also, you know, Dr. Valentino will talk about the work that he and his team are currently doing in terms of looking at the curriculum units and, you know, strategically making adjustments to be ready for the new year. We can also pivot and talk to Dr. Himal, you know, who can talk about specifically around, you know, how are we addressing some of those issues as we're entering into the summer space? Also, how are we developing a plan in the fall that's going to carry us into future years? That's going to help continue to close some of those opportunity gaps. And so with that being said, I'll I'll first start with Dr. Valentino, who could talk a little bit around, you know, what his team and what his team is doing specifically around curriculum, around curriculum developments, about professional development and professional learning, and then Dr. Himal around learning acceleration. So, Dr. Valentino?
And maybe the best place, thank you, maybe the best place to focus on, because like professional development, I'm not seeing if a student missed like two months of algebra, I'm not seeing how or geometry or I'm not seeing how professional development is going to get them that two months back. So maybe it's the other piece of like, what are what are the things that kids absolutely had to have that they may have missed? And how are we going to fill that in?
Right, and and that goes directly to the learning acceleration as we're thinking about summer and and fall programming. And and Dr. Himal is going to specifically talk to that. The only reason I was highlighting professional learning and development, Director Brent Edwards, is because again, you know, we're all going to have to kind of reinvent in terms of what our practice looks like and and as we enter into the full space. You know, how are we differentiating instruction? How are we scaffolding and individualizing, you know, instruction for every individual student? Also, you know, how are we accelerating through some of the units to make sure that we're we're, you know, we're guaranteeing mastery of specific content areas? So and that's the only reason why I said professional development, because that is a very, very big, big piece to enhancing pedagogy and practice as we're entering into the fall space. But, Dr. Himal, I think this question is mainly for you as we're really thinking around summer programming and and how we're building, you know, the foundation for, you know, what does learning acceleration look like as we're entering into fall?
By the way, I appreciate the explanation on the professional development. That's helpful.
And I think to even build on that, Director Brent Edwards, is that one of the ways that we're hoping to accelerate is with strategies that teachers aren't necessarily as familiar with, like interdisciplinary project-based opportunities for students. And so that means incorporating standards from their own courses with standards from other subject areas. And so this takes some practice and some and some specific time for teachers to create those kinds of project-based learning opportunities for the students. And and that's one of the key strategies that we're working on this summer is providing opportunities for our experts, our teachers and our TOSA teams and our curriculum folks to get together and really slim down the standards so that we can focus. Because we know that there's so many standards in each of the subject areas and it's really important for our teachers to be able to target the key standards and and then work those in to their their projects and their lesson plans so that the students who may have gaps from exactly what we were talking about may have missed some of the standards from last year, that there's opportunity to, if we are focusing on fewer standards in this grade level, then we can infuse standards that students may have missed from the previous grade levels in. And and one of the ways that we're trying to do that, instead of making it like worksheets or today, we're going to do something from last year is by the one of the strategies we're hoping to do is project-based learning. So that kids are learning those specific standards in engaging ways that can go across the subject areas so that the students aren't only learning those standards in one subject area siloed, but they're being able to make the connections across the subject areas. And so that's one of the ways that we're really trying to make up for some of the learning loss. And another key areas, we're really looking at some high-dose tutoring. So using the data that we get from MAPS testing, for example, in the fall, that MAPS testing is great in that it shows specific skills that our students have not yet mastered and that they're missing per grade level. So we're able to see as, for example, a sixth grader, some of the fifth grade standards that they may not have achieved yet. So then infusing that tutoring and having tutoring options targeted on those standards that they may have missed is another strategy that we're really hoping to leverage.
I'm sorry, and is that during the summer? And like, is that for, you know, 1% or like 20% of the students?
That's a good question.
As I talk to, like, I'll I'll see, like, hey, my student didn't get X. Where am I? How am I going to get that?
So this summer, we're being really targeted about who we're inviting. So similar to Liffy, we're inviting students to participate to who we believe had the least interactions with their teachers, that the students that have the hardest time being successful in the CDL model. So it'll be a similar invite. And then as we move into next school year, we're use we're hoping to use this summer as like an incubation period for some of these innovative ideas so that we can then take the the projects and the ideas and the 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 standards, the the focus standards that our educators focus on, that we can then bring that to scale across all the classrooms in PPS next year. So so this summer, you're right, is going to be a very small, targeted group of students, but with the idea that we need to build the foundations, build that knowledge so that we can then take it to scale.
I'm sorry, just one last question. The high-dose tutoring is is that done by, I'm thinking about, again, this sort of division of the buckets with the there's the federal money that's like maybe one time or shorter term. And then there's the long, the general fund, which is the sort of ongoing funding. Is that something that we pay for with, for example, our federal dollars? Because this is, we're giving them high dosage to sort of address that, but it's not an ongoing expenditure to address the issues that Director Moore raised?
Exactly. You're exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Director Bailey, I'm not going to skip you this time. Did you have any further questions or were you able to get out everything you needed to last round? And remember, we also can email. So this is, you know, we have multiple avenues of question asking to get what we need before our next meeting or our meeting on the 25th. Next meeting, we'll be tying the CDRC. So did you have anything else, Director Bailey?
That's popping up right this second. But I reserve the right to interrupt one of my colleagues when I do get a question, so.
Well, we are going to end at nine o'clock tonight because we do have lots of other opportunities to ask questions. So in honor of staff time, we are going to, we are going to end on time this evening. Director Constan, did you have any further questions you wanted to ask tonight?
No, I'm good with email, but I just want to double down again on this sort of notion about structurally, how are we explaining these different buckets? Because it's been, we've caught a couple of different threads in the questions that other people have brought up. For example, Director Scott talking about, you know, the importance of the federal funds being used only for sustainable activities. And these are the type of things that we need to be able to clearly communicate and delineate for the public. So, you know, we had a wonderful presentation from Ms. Narenberg about some of our summer offerings. So I would like to see some of that replicated in the budget proposal so that it's really clear to the public, this is what we're talking about in terms of direct activities that are targeted at addressing, you know, some some of the learning needs brought on by the pandemic. So again, I hope that the budget itself looks different at the end of this process. But I think we're pretty close in the sense that a lot of this information and a lot of this, the threads of this kind of storytelling and a lot of this work already exists. But it should be reflected in the budget about this is how this this is more specifically what those strategies and priorities look like. So people can sink their teeth into it.
I I think you're absolutely right, Director Constan and other directors have have put the same idea forth around that kind of communication collateral. In fairness to staff, the proposed budget content sort of went to print weeks ago, right? Before we had opportunity to actually think through, you know, what the design and the concept would be for the summer. So there's some really good stuff there. We we want to make sure and include in in this next version. And yes, that's exactly what these targeted one-time funds were for. But back to the performance management and impact conversation earlier. And if it works well, if we see acceleration for kids who are furthest behind, why would we not consider, when we have more sustainable current service level, to keep doing that kind of tutoring or other strategies? If we think that, you know, if it's showing, if it's demonstrating a positive impact on students? So this is a real good time to to incubate some of these strategies because if they pay dividends, then we should actually incorporate them into part of just the way we do our work.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Okay. Nathaniel, I'm going to go to Nathaniel and then we'll come back to you, Director Bailey. Is that okay? Or unless, what is your, is your question related to this that Guadalupe just said? Okay, Nathaniel, go ahead.
I don't have any more questions at this time. I'd just like to echo Director Moore's comments on the proposed decrease of state funding. It's really ridiculous to lower state school funding, just as we're beginning to emerge from the pandemic, because we received one-time assistance from the federal government intended specifically to address the incredible issues COVID has presented. And I also agree that all of us should contact our legislators about that because it's completely unreasonable.
And especially you, Nathaniel. Let's get Nathaniel to Salem. Student student perspectives are always the most compelling and that was a very articulate and passionate response there. So so whatever support you need from us, we're behind you. Be our spokesperson.
Thank you for that demonstration of our graduate portrait sense of agency and advocacy there, Nathaniel.
All right, Director Bailey, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, buried deep in the back pages is and I I make a point of asking about this fund once every six years and I get an answer. And then, you know, it's never in in writing or posted anywhere permanently. And there you go. So my six years are up, but I actually think I asked about it a year or two ago. It's Fund 308, the PERS UAL Debt Service Fund. I would love to see a like permanent brief explanation of what that is, where it came from, what's our strategy for spending it? I see it's been increasing somewhat. What are the restrictions around spending it? Is there a long-term strategy? Because we know our our PERS payments, our PERS bill can go up and probably likely will go up over time. Is that part of the strategy is to mitigate that going forward? Love to see something in writing permanently stuck on the on our budget webpage as an explanation. Thanks.
That's the great question for the President of International OASBO, Deputy Hertz.
Let's get in the weeds.
I was going to refer Director Bailey to the descriptor of PERS UAL Debt Service Fund in the budget that describes what the use of it is for. And just to it is our, we issued PERS bonds. We've done it three times in this district, 2002, 2003, and 2011. And what it has done is saved us hundreds of millions in PERS costs by issuing bonds to pay our unfunded actuarial liability or our future pension costs for all of the employees that have retired or will retire from PPS. So it is a way. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and has put us in a very different position than other school districts in our state.
So the way that funds come in is at the percentage of salary. So we only expense what we need for the debt service payments to pay the bonds back. But when we invest those bonds in the PERS side account, it has outperformed at a higher interest rate than what we have to pay on the debt of the bonds that are issued. And that arbitrage in between the two are what is what where we realize our savings. And that's a perfect segue to our next board meeting because we'll be bringing Carol Samuels here. Alberto Dago de O, our CFO, will be presenting the possibility of going for a new PERS bond for our current PERS pension liability.
Do I get an assist for bringing this up now?
That is perfect. Thank you for the timing.
The extra point.
I will say there there is a page and it has a little bit of writing on it, but there's a lot of white space in there that could be filled up for just a little more. A little, little simple and a little more extended discussion of because that's a chunk of money and it has been going up slightly. So an explanation, here's the trend. Here's here's why we're we're holding on to it. Here's when we might spend from it or I, you know, anyway. Or
We won't, we will, we will always spend it only on paying the debt of the bonds that we, and we have a very structured schedule of when we pay make those payments and how much they will be.
Chair Lowry?
Yeah, we're, yes, Julia.
I have one additional question I'd like to ask if
Yeah, yeah, we have nine minutes left of our meeting. Julia has indicated she has a question. Is there anyone else who has a remaining question before we end our time? All right, seeing none, go ahead, Director Brent Edwards.
Okay. So I'd like to know, in this proposed budget, are there any school-based? It's because it's it's hard to take the two, like 400 pages and be able to tell this. Are there any school-based cuts that aren't tied to enrollment changes? Like an example would be like, we're going to give kids like Like an example would be like, we're going to give kids like less PE or the, cut the adaptive PE. So that, that's one question. Are there any cuts embedded in that, um, budget? And then second, at the, at the last board meeting, it was, here's the set of assumptions we have, that we're making since we're in the middle of the legislative session. And based on this, that we, uh, believe that there's going to be, uh, a need to make $3 million in cuts. And I would like to know, uh, whether before the, uh, we're being asked to, uh, approve the, um, the budget, if staff will have identified that $3 million that they would cut or what, what list they would work off of?
Well, we'll have Deputy Hertz, um, talk to the second part of that. But what I didn't want was Dr. Sean Bird to feel left out this evening. So who else better than to speak to, you know, the resourcing to our school communities than our chief of schools? Sean?
Good evening, directors. Good to see you all again. Uh, thanks for including me.
I could bring you into the conversation.
Yeah. So the school staffing, uh, we're pleased to report is, uh, is not, has not been reduced. Unless there were enrollment changes that would have caused a reduction. But otherwise, uh, schools are, are maintaining the level of support that they've had in the past. And in some cases, increasing support. So CSI schools, TSI schools, um, Signal Site Admins, um, sites will get additional, uh, assistance in many cases. It's building on, uh, investments we've made in years past. It's just building on those sort, for example, at CSI schools, they had 1.0 instructional specialist. Now they're going to have 1.5 and TSI schools had 0.5 and they're going to have 1.0. So it's increasing.
If we hear from us, like a solitary school, like, you know, arts being cut in half or this is other change, the likelihood is, or what you're telling me is that would have been something that came about because of enrollment change? Or potentially a, a non-general funded, say something was foundation funded and it's no longer funded?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then, and then there, um, you know, some principals, uh, some schools purchase additional things with equity funding. And, uh, as you know, more schools are getting that this year. So there's a slight change in the, in the amount. So some principals are having to readjust, uh, some of their equity funding in order to pay for those positions. But it, it would be, it's generally tied to enrollment changes is why, um, schools would, uh, quote unquote, lose some things. But in most cases, it's fine.
Great. Thank you. And then the second part of the question?
That's for Claire.
So I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the question. And you said, if we had, had to make a $3 million reduction, what would we prioritize as reductions? I wanted to make sure I heard the complete question.
I'm looking at the presentation from last board meeting and it's, well, there's no page numbers. So it's about, it's page six and it's proposed investment plan. And it says, in order to balance the general fund with a projected state education budget of 9.3 billion, required us to identify approximately $3 million in savings from the general fund. Some, um, it sounds like maybe you've already identified them. So can you tell us, and maybe with specificity or send to us what those changes are, what those reductions are?
I don't have the specificity, but I can tell you that, um, they, I, our CFO, Noberto Dogo, referred to it earlier this evening that it was mostly in centralized services and non-personnel costs, although some of it were open positions that we decided not to fill.
Okay. It'd be great to get that, that detail so that, um, we know what, what, um, centralized services are, are important too. So that'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for, um, a great discussion. And thank you so much, staff, for all of your answers and your willingness to, um, all teleport in from the green room. Uh, and we are going to go ahead and adjourn. Our next board meeting will be on, uh, May 11th. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.